Coming up next, a Victoria City Council meeting on VTV 15.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the June 18th City Council meeting. Ms. Hilbert, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Delgarza.
I am present.
Councilman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Young.
Here.
And Mayor Crocker.
Here.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Scott and Councilman Lofgren will not be joining us this evening.
Thank you. Yes, we are a smaller but enthusiastic group nonetheless. If you enjoy me for the, join me for the pledges and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right. Again, welcome, everyone. We will move right into item B1, which is announcements and reminders. Mr. Etienne, welcome.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I do have several announcements today. First, I would like to provide an update on the weather we can expect to see in Victoria starting today and into Thursday. So we anticipate significant rainfall over the next few days due to Tropical Cyclone 1. Due to the system's expensive coverage and slow movement, several hazards and impacts are expected across South Texas through Thursday. We can expect large amounts of rainfall and gusty winds, potential flash flooding and river flooding, and a marginal risk for tornadoes. Most of the remaining hazards will begin late tonight as the rain moves inland. Our police, fire, public works, and other professional staff have been working with the Victoria Office of Emergency Management to ensure we are prepared to address any challenges resulting from the storm, including increasing staffing and resources to respond to any street closures due to flooding. Staff will also be monitoring city facilities and conditions in Riverside Park over the next few days and are prepared to make any closures as needed. We will continue to share information on our city's website at www.victoriatax.gov, on social media at City of Victoria Texas government, and via our city's alert system for the duration of the storm. We want to take this time to ask the public to sign up for city road closure alerts by visiting our city's alert center at www.victoriatax.gov/newsroom and clicking on City Alerts. There, residents can opt into receiving weather alerts, road closures, and city news releases. For emergency alerts, residents can sign up for the Victoria Office of Emergency Management code RID notification system by texting ALERTVICTORIA at 99411. Again, we encourage residents to remember to take every precaution on the roadways, and when they see a flooded area, to turn around, don't drown. Also, check road conditions before traveling at driveTexas.gov. I do have some other announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
All non-emergency city offices will be closed on Wednesday, June 19th, and observance of June 10th. The offices will reopen at 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, June 20th. Yard waste and recycling scheduled for Wednesday will be collected as usual. The Victoria Public Library will open from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. On Friday, June 28th, City Council will convene in council chambers at 9:00 a.m. for a budget work session where City Manager Garza will present the preliminary FY25 budget. Now, this is strictly preliminary, and the proposed budget will officially be presented on August 6th. On behalf of Parks and Recreation Department, every Friday morning through August 2nd, residents of all ages can expect fun and creative outdoor activities hosted by our Parks Department in Queen City Park. There will be a Community Resource Fair on June 21st from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. and Arts in the Park on June 28th from 9:30 to 10:30 a.m. More information can be found at victoriatax.gov/parks. On behalf of CVB, applications for the City of Victoria's annual hotel occupancy tax funds awards for 2024-2025 will open on Monday, July 1st, and will close on Wednesday, July 31st. Information workshops for potential applicants will be held at 700 Main Center, Conference Room 205, on Mondays, July 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd. For application forms and more details, go to victoriatax.gov/business or contact Conventions and Visitors Bureau Director Joel Novosad at 361-485-3117. Finally, the Police Department is teaming up with Mr. Gaddy's Pizza for a summer bike parade on Friday, June 21st. Registration starts at 9:00 a.m. with the bike parade to follow at 10:00 a.m. Kids ages 3 to 12 are invited to bring their decorated bikes for a parade held in Mr. Gaddy's parking lot. Participants will get to show off their bikes, learn about bike safety, and meet some of Victoria's first responders. As a bonus, every kid who registers for the parade will get a free buffet after the event. That's all the announcements. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Etienne. And I just want to say thanks to emergency management team, staff, and employees that have been making ready for the coming rain event. We appreciate all the extra effort you guys are putting in to make sure citizens are safe. So, thank you all. Mr. Etienne, do we have any public and employee recognitions?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay. Then I will move on to items from Council. Does anyone have anything this evening? All right. Well, then, we will move into Citizens Communication. And Mr. Von der Oo. You are my lone green card tonight.
Oh, thanks.
Congratulations.
Hello, City Council and Attorney Crocker. I'm Michael Von der Oo. I live at 2204 East North Street. We still have a problem with people sleeping at the car wash by the Salvation Army, and there's someone sleeping there now. And I was wondering, can someone help them, like the resource team at the Salvation Army, or Midcos, or the homeless coalition? Because it's in the 90s, and they don't have no money and no water and anything like this. And this is a continuing problem. And also, we have high grass over on 600 East Warren Street across from the, I got a brain for it, but it's a 600 Christ Kitchen and stuff. And anyway, despite being written up by code enforcement, you know, the owner don't want to mow their yard. It's like 3 to 4 foot. And at Heaven's Gate Funeral Home, it's no more a funeral, no more, but it got repo'd. But, I mean, forecloses cars. But anyway, it's got high grass over there. And also, there's a curfew. You can't lauter around or sleep at Queen City Park because they've been making busts, you know, for lauterin after 11:00 a.m., 11:00 p.m. And I don't know why they do that. They got four giant big signs. You can't miss them. And also zigzags, the rolling papers, those are illegal. That's a Class C misdemeanor, and that one got busted for that and lauterin around the park. And I just, there's also was assault right by Christ Kitchen on 600 the block of East Warren. That was on police to citizen. And I appreciate the police officers and sheriff's deputy doing security from 11:00 to 1:00. You know, the crime is a lot better, and I appreciate all their work. But right as I'm speaking, there's someone living at that car wash, you know, by the Salvation Army. And I wish someone could help him because it's really sad, you know, when the City of Victoria comes to housing homeless people in car wash stalls. And I really wish someone could do something about it. I talked about it last two weeks, and they're still living there. Thanks, and have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Von der Oo. With that being my only card, then, we will move on. We have no items of public hearing, so we'll move into item D, which is the Consent Agenda.
Item D1 is the adoption amendments of the regular meeting held on June 4th, 2024. Item D2 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Ardua Group Incorporated for Design Services for the Northeast Water Street Water Line Replacement Project in the amount of $159,617. Item D3 is a resolution finding that AEP Texas Incorporated's requested increase to its electric transmission and distribution rates and charges within the city should be denied. Item D4 is a resolution approving a payment for annual software maintenance to Central Square Technologies in the amount of $209,848.44. Item D5 is a resolution approving rec- I can't say this today. Reclicentori Change Order Number 7 to the Dealey on Plaza Expansion Project with Lager Companies Incorporated in the amount of $109,535.85 for a total contract amount of $5,653,912. Item D6 is a resolution approving a purchase of the MOGS 50 Oxygen Compression System from Novair for an amount of $75,323. And item D7 is a resolution awarding the 2024 Emerald Hills Sanitary Sewer Line Rehabilitation Project to T. Gray Utility Ames LLC of Houston, Texas, in the amount of $136,450.
Thank you, Ms. Hilbert. Any motions with respect to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda is read.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well. We will then move into item E1.
Item E was a resolution amending, a resolution approving an amendment to extend the expenditure deadline to December 31st, 2024 for the community grant agreement with Billy T. Catan Recovery Outreach Center.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I get to be one of the big kids today, and a short presentation is going to encompass all three action items that we have. Did I do that? So, just quick background on our funding, the three grantees, and then the actual request. Oh, that is, oh, it worked. Okay. So, background. The American Rescue Plan Act was financial relief that came via the U.S. Treasury Department to individuals, businesses, communities affected by COVID, and the money was used to cover pandemic-related expenses, promote economic recovery. It didn't have as many tight strings as some of the other money that came from out of different departments. So, the City of Victoria received $14,508,296 in two pieces. The funding obligation deadline that came from the ARPA funds was at the end, is at the end of this year, and then communities have to spend those funds by the end of 2026. So, this is the spending breakdown for how the City of Victoria spent their funds. You'll see the majority of it went into our Public Safety Headquarters. The bottom three at the smallest amounts was $158,000 for the duck pond, $100,000 for our investment with Innovation Collective, and then $61,000 for broadband, which I believe was for the study that we did back in '21. And so, you saw $1.25 million went toward community grants, and it went to three grantees, the South Texas Zoological Society, otherwise we know it as the Texas Zoo, Billy T. Catan Recovery Outreach, and the Salvation Army. We, the city decided to award them as beneficiaries instead of subrecipients. Therefore, they didn't have to do, we didn't have to do pass-through reporting, and it allowed us to have a little more flexibility in our agreements as to how they could use their funds as well. So, the original expenditure deadline in the agreement that were passed in 2023 would have ended at the end of this month, on June 30th. First, the Texas Zoo had a number of projects listed, one of which being their master planning experience. Hurricane and flood mitigation and some other exhibits. They report, each entity reports quarterly as to what they've spent, and at the end of March, they had spent $159,000 roughly of the $500,000 that they had. And part of their request, they requested additional time to make it through the RFB process for hurricane and flood mitigation. And if there are any additional questions, Bill Baker, the Executive Director of the Texas Zoo, is here, and he can answer those questions at the end. Billy T. Catan Recovery Outreach, we invested $500,000 to go towards Hope Ranch. I wanted to note that this is, as of when we had the agreement completed or executed in January of 2023, it was a $6.5 million total project. I'm sure, as everyone else knows, their costs have probably gone up like everything else. So, we've invested a small part, and also, I believe you all have passed some things, annexing them in for utilities and whatnot. As of March 31st, they'd spent $86,588.20, and they're anticipating construction to start in mid-October of this year, and they will have spent the remainder of their funds by December 31st. And then Elma Signs, the Chief Operating Officer of the Billy T. Catan Recovery Outreach Center, is here if she, if you have any questions for her. And lastly, the Salvation Army, their Learning Enrichment Center. I believe you've seen, many of you went to the ribbon cutting and grand opening. Their project included operations for the first year, and as of March 31st, they had spent $131,905.75. I believe we just, we weren't sure if the money would go all the way for a full year, and the incredible need that they've seen has required that they will probably have to hire an additional staff person and expand the hours of operation for the center. And Captain Jones is here from the Salvation Army if you have any questions for him. So, what we're asking is three extensions for the expenditure deadlines. The South Texas Zoological Society would be a 90-day extension through September 30th. Billy T. Catan Recovery Outreach would be a 180-day extension through December 31st, and the Salvation Army would be a 210-day extension through March 31st of 2025. As I said, we awarded them as grantees, as awardees, and not, I'm sorry, beneficiaries, and not as subrecipients. So, we've already met our spending obligations with the federal government, and this does not change anything in those agreements. So, does anyone have questions?
And again, the deadline for those expenditures is the end of 2026.
For the city to have spent the funds, but we've already awarded these.
Already awarded.
And so, we've, those have been considered spent for our purposes.
Got it. Okay. Any questions? All right. Well done. Thank you, Ms. Smith. So then, with respect to item E1, I'll entertain any motions.
Motion to approve item E1 to amend and extend the expenditure deadline, uh, deadline to December 31st for Billy T. Catan Recovery Outreach Center.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item E2, then. Any motions with respect to that?
Do you want me to read it, sir?
Yes, you might as well. We're all reading it.
Item E2 is a resolution approving an amendment to extend the expenditure deadline to September 30th, 2024 for the community grant agreement with the South Texas Zoological Society.
Thank you, Ms. Hilbert, keeping me straight.
Move to approve item E2.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion and a second with respect to E2. Any discussion on that item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item E3.
Item E3 is a resolution approving an amendment to extend the expenditure deadline to March 31st, 2025 for the community grant agreement with the Salvation Army.
Any motions with respect to E3?
Yes. Move to approve item E3.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That moves us then rather quickly into item F with this, which is City Manager Reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We do have two City Managers' Reports today, and Ms. Lisa Wube, our Parks Director, will present those two reports.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
We are excited to talk about this year's July 4th event. Have you noticed on the dice, I put a little box there? What's the teasers, fun little hat, and some candy, so to get you all excited. The Bicentennial Blast Off Celebration. This event will take place on Thursday, July 4th, and as you can see, we're almost 17 days away, so it's coming up closely. The event officially starts at 4 o'clock with music, although there are activities that are taking place earlier in the day, and I'll share that lineup here shortly. Let's go back. I think it's doing its thing. Thank you. And there's our whole presentation.
Well done.
Yeah. Oh, this one right here? Yeah. Okay. I'm just cutting you too fast. Thank you. All right. So, our fireworks, they're actually going to be shot off from the golf course, and we are using Roar Over Texas. And music and sound is going to be provided by CNC Productions, and as you can see, the artist lineup here is Pat Mantula and the Lone Star Playboys, as well as Rick Evans, Jonava, and Stephanie Ross. Here are a list of some of the activities that will take place in our special events areas, which is directly across from Riverside Stadium. And as you can see, we have the Texas Zoo Safari Splash. Thank you to our Texas Zoo, as well as a fishing clinic, a car show at the Riverside Stadium. And as you can see, there's a long list, and we kick off that morning with a 5K race with the Victoria Area Runners Association. Food and beverages will be available throughout the special events area and Riverside Stadium, and those beer sales onsite will support the general's charities. Here's a timeline of our events. Want to give a shout out to Lizzie. She made this beautiful logo for us. And as you can see, 7:30, we kick off the 5K race, and then we jump into volleyball. And so, we encourage our residents and anyone attending to please check out our website, and it gives you a timeframe of when you can join us. Next, we have our partnerships and sponsorships, and we felt that it was best because obviously, we cannot do this alone. And so, as you can see, we have several listed here as well. Thanks to Calipular Waste Management and Town Square Media, who have joined us in our sponsorship efforts, as well as our partners. And this is our event map for this year. It's very festive. It really highlights for our residents so they can see exactly where to go. And then lastly, we wanted to share some do's and don'ts. We do want you to bring your lawn chairs. We do want you to bring your blankets, your sunscreen, and we want you to enjoy yourself. And again, all this information is going to be listed online. And obviously, our don'ts is we do not want to leave our children unattended, and we ask that you don't park along the side of the road or any unapproved surfaces, and then lastly, no weapons. And that pretty much concludes what we have for the July 4th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, should you have any at this time.
Questions? Thank you. Looks like a full day.
Yeah.
Lots on that agenda.
Yes. Our team has been working very, very hard. I'm very excited. We're excited for a great show.
And Mr. Mayor, I do want to thank the CVB staff as well for helping with this event. They do a great job. In fact, the fireworks was, I guess, the January fireworks for the New Year's Eve fireworks was held in the parks, at Riverside Park, and it was extremely popular. People loved it. So, holding it again in Riverside Park is just fantastic. And I want to thank the staff, all the sponsors, and of course, CVB staff for helping.
Great job. We'll look forward to it.
Do you have any expectations for the public regarding bringing pets to an event like this?
I guess I might have to defer to some help. I'm going to put you on the spot, Steve. I'm not clear about the pet policy there. I believe that it is, they're on a leash. That's our park rules. I don't think anything outside of that, and that's kind of the comment I was going to make.
Just make sure that your pets are on a leash.
Just on a leash.
Yeah, we might want to put a public service announcement out on that because I remember a couple of years ago at the community center, two pets were lost, and the families couldn't find them because of the fireworks.
Okay. I know we have set up a station at the event for any missing children and things of that sort, so we make sure that that area has been covered. So, all is well for children and pets. Thank you for that question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Then, I believe item F2, you're still up.
I'm still here. Yes, I am still here. Again, I am here to also share about our mosquito management in Victoria. This is the time of year where mosquitoes are most prevalent and most active, and so our goal is to prevent the risk of mosquito-borne illnesses. The City of Victoria Parks Department sprays for mosquitoes to reduce the potential spread of mosquito-borne diseases, and the services are typically performed during the months of June through October. When the staff sprays, they begin in the evening time, when the majority of our residents are asleep, approximately 9 o'clock, and continue until the entire zone has been treated. And as you can see here, and this is a map showing that the city is divided into two zones. And so, I think it's important to note, there is a change in our mapping, being that the zones are still showing, multiple zones, but we've actually separated them into a north zone and a southern zone. So, residents are easy, easily able to identify their area. And so, I'd like to talk through some of the common questions that we have. One is, when will you spray? The expected rain event will impact the timing of our mosquito spraying. We have a lot of rain, so it will push us back several weeks. However, as we receive calls, we will respond to specific problem areas. We monitor the weather and other factors to predict when an outbreak will occur so that the spraying can begin before the calls come in. Another question that you may have for residents is, how long does it take the spray to city? Well, it typically takes about three days to spray our entire city. That includes both of the zones. And what do we use? We use safe, non-toxic chemicals, and these are all TDA-approved. How do you use the mosquito dunks? I've also placed those up at the diocese. They're in a plastic bag. And what I wanted to share is that those mosquito dunks actually dissolve in water. And so, here is some details about what our department has started as an initiative. We are actually going to pass out one free mosquito dunk to each resident, one per household in the City of Victoria. And the reason why we're doing that, this will allow us to have a conversation with the residents when they come and pick up their dunks, and we're able to really identify where their problem areas are and have that conversation with them. Mosquito dunks are a very powerful preventative measure. We will also be spraying for July 4th in our Riverside Park, and some of our larger parks will be sprayed, such as Ethel Lee, Hopkins, just to name a few. So, here you see surveillance, public education, as well as prevention. The Parks and Recreation Department keeps track of reports of mosquitoes, and as far as public education, again, when we're, when you're picking up your dunks, we will have a conversation with you and talk through your questions about your particular situation, because they're all different. And prevention, this leads me to how citizens can help. If you need to report a problem, we ask that you please call our main office at the Parks and Recreation Office. That's 361-485-3200. Or you can email us at parks@victoriatax.gov. And lastly, what can you do to help? We're asking that you remove your old tires, tin cans, buckets, trucks, bottles, keep your grass cut short, change the water in the bird baths and plant pots at least once each week, and clean your gutters regularly. This information will be provided to you along, this is just a short list, but there are numerous things that our residents can do to help assist this moving forward. And I'm here to answer any questions, should you have those at this time.
I have a question concerning mosquito trapping. Is Victoria, Victoria County participating in any type of mosquito trapping situation to test for diseases?
Yes. In the time that I have been working with our department, some of the research that I've found is that it's a multi-pronged approach. And one of the steps that we take is to go ahead and trap. We have several licensed TDA professionals on our staff, and that is the first step. We do work in collaboration and partnership with our county officials, the Health Department, as well as our, our active research in this area. It's ever-changing.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I could just say thank you all for doing that. It's very important and much, much needed and much appreciated by the citizens. So, glad you all are playing it out. So, glad you all are playing it out and appreciate all your work in it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
With that then, I believe we have completed our City Manager Reports. I think we will have a short executive session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very short.
Okay, well, then it is 5:30. Well, when Mr. Garza is not here, we move along at a... So, it is 5:30. We will move into executive session. We'll take a short 10-minute break before we do so.
The City Council will recess for executive session on the 18th day of June 2024 at 5:30 p.m. Subject matter is as follows. Texas Government Code 551.087, 551.071, and 551.072.